Close session and we will resume our meeting with a regular meeting and to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I would move to approve the agenda after that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, we'll move to leadership class. We get the box again.
Hi, everybody. I'm here tonight with one of my students and I'll introduce Sydney in just a minute and I'm going to give Miss Ocoa a chance to pull up our PowerPoint for today. We recently had elections in the leadership class. Our class of 2024 incoming members that are current freshmen are going to be sophomores. Our 2023s, which are the sophomores, are going to be juniors and our 2022s, which are our juniors, are going to be seniors, all elected. Five new officers. I'm going to go ahead and skip to those slides in a minute here, but Sydney's one of the five officers who's been elected to the leadership class. Sydney's going to be representing us as our secretary next year in the leadership class. Let's see if this Ocoa can jump ahead to all their faces forming here real quick. So Kyler Carson is going to be the president of the student leadership class next year. Kyler is currently at lacrosse practice, so he was unable to attend tonight. Melinda Brunk is going to be our student council vice president, student leadership. Melinda is currently on quarantine COVID, so she was unable to come tonight. Madison Matier is our treasurer for the 2021-2022 school year. Madison is also a lacrosse player, so she's at practice this evening. Sedona Bessler is going to be our community public relations officer, so she'll run all of our social media and she is at work tonight. So then luckily, Sydney Peters was able to be here this evening. Sydney's going to be the secretary and she's going to present our last slide tonight. So those are our five newly elected officers in the leadership class.
Congratulations.
And they started their term at the beginning of fourth quarter, which started on April 12th on that Monday. So they all joined us in the leadership class that day and then currently we have the students enrolled in meeting with us every day and those kids are our five officers. So they'll be with us. We're wrapping up our charity week, COVID-friendly charity week. Dutton Farm was our charity that we supported this year. Unfortunately, I don't have a total to give to you tonight. Our financial secretary at Lake Orion High School is out on quarantine, so I don't have our final total deposits unfortunately. We were very thankful to work with Dutton Farm and they were very easy to work with and friendly and we're really looking forward to giving them a check kind of in a COVID-safe public way so that we can honor the students that did work on our charity week events. Our Strive for Safe Drive campaign just ended and actually Sydney's going to tell you a little bit about that this evening, our new election, and then transitioning into our newly elected officers. We only have three seniors in the class right now and those three seniors, normally we wouldn't have seniors in the fourth quarter of the school year, but with the scheduling and issues we had this year, we kind of wanted those girls to get a chance to be in leadership their final quarter. So we do have three young ladies as seniors. The rest are all juniors and sophomores. So it's going to be a young group. We're really looking forward to being back in the building five days a week with those kids and getting to kind of see what we can do to kind of rebuild some culture that we feel like we really need to as leaders in the building. So I think you can go ahead. Let's get through those five again. And then I just wanted to kind of wrap up some of the things I had mentioned the last time I was here. We did a very successful donut day. We worked with DK Donuts up in Oxford and I will tell you, I cannot tell you how wonderful they were to work with. That locally owned business was fantastic. We served almost 600 donuts each morning at Lake Orion High School pre-ordered by the two cohorts, the green cohort and the white cohort, both days. The donuts were labeled per student. Students were able to order what flavor they wanted. It was fantastically organized and kudos to that business. It was great to work with them. We had no glitches, no problems and all of the people got their donuts. And then we had a really nice, really, really great way to work with them and we were able to be, it was quite lucrative for our charity. So we were glad to do that. Our Dragon Plunge, as I mentioned the last time I was here, was quite successful and I hope you had the chance to watch it. Our TPW kids narrated that for us and we had a fantastically entertaining event. It happened to be right after I was here last. I did participate. Mine did not win and I'm perfectly happy about that. Sydney witnessed it. But it was a really fun event. We look forward to doing that again in the future and being able to involve the students more, which I think will make it a little more financially lucrative. The teachers that participated were gracious and wonderful and we had a really good time. And then the students voted and we have not announced the winner yet, but I'll give you a sneak peek. Jason Wise, one of our math teachers, is going to be the 2021 Charity Week Dragon Plunge winner. So he'll receive the golden plunger to keep in his classroom and we look forward to doing that again next year. So hopefully we'll have a total for you the next time we meet and we can announce that and get that money to Dutton Farms. So any questions I can answer for you about our charity week?
What's exciting about the donuts, Ms. Hogan? How early did you get up for, how early did you start to make the donuts?
Well, luckily the people at DK Donuts had them all ready for us when we rolled in at 6:00 a.m. to get all the donuts. With the students being on delayed start, it was nice because we were able to get the donuts really early, bring them into the high school, make sure they were ready to go into the classrooms, organized. I'll tell you what, I love a good, efficient, well-run machine and that turned out. I'll give kudos to Brennan France, who is our leadership CPR officer, who did most of the legwork on that one. But they were such an easy, nice business to work with. I would strongly encourage if you ever want good donuts, they're definitely the place to go. So yeah, but luckily I have a really big car and I had a lot of donuts in it.
Congratulations. You had your best.
Other question?
Well, I look forward to hearing the totals when, hopefully maybe the next meeting, we'll have a representative who can share with us some of these totals. That's outstanding and Dutton Farms was so worthy.
Yeah, they've been wonderful to work with and they've sent us some great social media pics of their kids wearing our Charity Week shirts.
Which were awesome.
Yeah, and it was really, it was really nice to work locally and be able to give back kind of to our own community. So that was really neat to work with. So I'm going to let Sydney take over here and do our last slide. Okay, so in third quarter, we focused a lot on Strive for Safer Drive, which is our Student Safe Driving Campaign in conjunction with the Michigan Transportation Department and Ford Motor Company. We were specifically focusing on seatbelt safety. We allowed students to post a picture on Twitter wearing their seatbelt to be entered into a giveaway and we also distributed surveys to students regarding statistics about safe driving and the importance of wearing a seatbelt to be entered into the same giveaway.
Great.
That's all.
Thank you for being here.
Any other questions?
So hopefully next time we'll have the whole group or at least a partial group of the students. I know, I know you all like seeing me, but I really hope the kids will be here as much as possible and for them to get the chance to get to know you. I know Kyler, our new president, really wants the opportunity. So I said, well, you might have to leave lacrosse practice a little early. So we'll work on that. So.
Well, thank you, Sydney, for being here. We appreciate you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all you do for our high school.
Thank you. We appreciate it. We're a great group of people, so we're really lucky to have good people to work with. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Following that good news, we'll go to some other good news. Communication update with Mark.
So I just wanted to share a few different things. We're going, Inside the Dragon, hopefully you all saw that, you know, it debuted last week on ONTV and we shared it on YouTube. And as the theme is, you'll see later, the learning highlights, we've had a lot of award winners with our, with our staff members for different things. We've been able to recognize a lot of different staff members over the last, you know, couple of weeks and months. So it's really been a great opportunity to kind of highlight them. In terms of my other responsibilities, a lot of the stuff has been, you know, supporting our, our different departments, teaching, learning, obviously. With HR, I've been helping them, you know, in terms of the COVID protocols and, and trying to support them on those different things. So basically, there's been a lot of different areas that we've been trying to kind of work with and, you know, keep our website, you know, current so that people can operate. And in terms of school choice too, I've been working with the Ellison Dome and enrollment department. So more to come in the learning highlights. Any questions?
Thank you, Mark. All right, we'll move to public participation. We have one person this evening, Drew Frye, please.
Good evening. My name is Drew Frye. I'm a community member and an arts advocate, I guess. I just wanted to start by thanking the board for their time and the service to this community. And for the record, let it be said that at no time did we cut any of the budget or anything related to our performing arts program. That was one, how one of this administration chose to end the last meeting with their closing statement. Being curious, I put in a request under the Freedom of Information Act for the budget for the theater. They are mistaken. Last year, the operating budget for the theater space itself was around $80,000. They cut about $30,000 from it for this year's operating budget for the theater. To me, that seems like a significant cut and an odd time to make that claim in a meeting. But if this administration would like to continue this very public and unprofessional back and forth, I'll be here to correct you each and every time. I promise. Thank you, board, for your time. Thank you for your service.
All right, we'll move on to strategic area discussion items and governance and we'll begin with the student attendance update. Ben, please.
All right, thank you. If I could, I want to start out with some prepared, some prepared words that I had with, do we have any other public comment?
I don't know. I was trying to figure out what the thing was. We're over there.
I was just saying, I think the door has to be opened. He shut the door and we're out.
Public meetings, the door has to be opened.
We, we do have five people following us online, so if anybody is interested in making public comments that's following on the Zoom webinar, could you raise your hand, please?
Yeah, I don't think.
No, we can't pick people online any longer.
It doesn't look like anybody has their hand raised anyway, so.
Okay, well, I guess we'll have to work through that. But yeah, I don't, I don't have any hands raised.
They have to be present.
Yeah, and we don't have anybody that's asking anyways, but we have it in person if that is the option for them to be here. Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, sorry about that. So I have prepared some words in reference to the governor's actions last week. So if you could just bear with me, but I wanted to talk through some of the items that I thought were important about that press conference. Lake Orion Community Schools is an elite school district for a reason. This district is an organization that is focused on our students with a vision of educating our students for the challenges of today and tomorrow. Those who created that vision statement had no indication that we would be facing the challenges that we're facing today. The challenges today are tremendous and the focus on students needs to be even greater. We're making decisions each day that impact today and tomorrow for thousands of students in Lake Orion Community Schools. This year, many of the decisions we are forced to make are impacted by others outside of our district and our proud community. The staff in the district remain committed and focused on our students' successes, recognizing that this has thousands of individual faces and, and unique needs. On April 9th, we were faced with yet another decision based on the governor unexpectedly asking school districts to voluntarily halt in-person instruction at high schools across our state and pause youth sports. This request followed the explanation that implementing a strategy after spring break will reduce the spread in our state, which leads to the nation in COVID cases. This request from governor, from our governor, came 18 hours after a county superintendent's meeting with our health department, which continued to support in-person instruction based on the following factors. We were told that there is a low transmission rate in schools. We at Lake Orion Community Schools have had two outbreaks. An outbreak is defined as two, two positive cases within one classroom. We've had two. Continue with mitigation strategies. That's in our approved Lake Orion Community Schools plan and we have continued to mitigate, use those mitigation strategies. We've been told to stay the course, maintain our programming that we were using prior to spring break after you return from spring break. And that is what we did. We were told that the vaccinations for the 16 and older group in Oakland County is likely not going to be available until May or June. Unfortunately, we have a shortage of vaccinations for what the need is and the 16-year-olds aren't going to be in the front of that line and it's going to be towards the end of the school year. And also, we were told that the hospital data in our county is stable. That was the information that we had 18 hours before the governor's press conference. The discussion around the sports transmission concerns focused on the contact sports, which have obviously concluded, and the family and the friend behaviors after the conclusion of the activities. We respect the governor's request and consider it while looking at our district circumstances. This internal review that we should be looking at within our districts and consulting with our health departments has been the guidance from the very beginning. The governor and MDHHS have the authority to prevent in-person instruction as evidenced by previous action. As school districts, we are focused on our vision as an organization and our ability to educate and operate successfully while considering the whole child, including emotional, mental, and physical safety. A week before the governor's request, Lake Orion Community Schools returned from spring break and successfully provided in-person instruction while seeing operational capacity improving as the week progressed. We started the week by shifting staff to fill 14 vacant positions on Monday. By Friday, we worked to fill only two positions, which is a typical number of vacancies. Operationally, we were in a good, good spot at the week's end. The number of staff who have been able to avoid quarantines is high in making a difference. We had many families who self-selected their high school students to quarantine as recommended by MDHHS. We had approximately 70% or higher in-person student attendance all week at the high school. This week that we're currently in, three of the five days, we had a reduced population of approximately 50% to take state assessments. As of April 6th, we had a total of 52 positive cases in our district boundaries for students ages 14 to 18, which would basically encompass our high school students. This data is representative of our entire school district boundaries and not necessarily Lake Orion Community School students. We serve approximately 2,000 high school students in person. Should we volunteer to pause in-person instruction for less than a 3% positivity rate? We had one student athlete test positive during the winter wrestling season and they were tested three times a week. As of today, we have had two positive test results of our 543 athletes tested so far this week. Are those compelling reasons to pause sports? If we did implement the pause, do we really think that the students would live out the 14 days utilizing the mitigation strategies we enforce in schools? The decision to continue with in-person instruction in grades nine to 12 was made with great care and consideration. For all of our students, we will continue to attack the challenges of today, and there are many, to make a better tomorrow for our Dragon students. There may come a time that we recognize that the operational challenges cause us to flip to remote instruction in a building or a district, or our district. There may come a time that the health officials require us to flip to remote education, to be part of a community plan to improve community spread. In the meantime, we will continue to inspire our students through education, social, emotional support, and the life experiences they need to continue their growth as learners and productive members of the Dragon community. I felt that I needed to share that to help people understand what went into that decision and it wasn't an easy decision, meaning that it wasn't a simple, quick decision, but there is a lot that goes into each of these things. So I wanted to start off with that so that people understood that decision that we made. As far as the legislative update, obviously, you know, the governor made her request that I just talked about a little bit. We also are still under the health order and that goes through April 19th. There was no new action on that and I think that's really important for people to understand. I do want to let the board know that the village of Lake Orion did declare a state of emergency and that does extend to Lake Orion Community Schools and they, in essence, did that for their uses of their meetings. We don't have to comply with that, but it is an option for us. I'm not recommending that, but I'm just making you aware that that declaration was made so that you have that information. The legislation has been, the legislators have been on spring break through April 13th, so there hasn't been a lot of action. And I also wanted to mention that the MIOSA order that was set to expire April 14th, today, that it was extended for six months. So there also was a caveat that was set in there that that certainly can be curbed back, but at this point, they have extended that for six months. So I wanted to share that information under the legislative update. What questions do you have?
I do, Mr. Kirby, if I may, or comment. Well, as a parent, it came pretty fast on Friday that the governor's office came out with the pause and the superintendent's office came out with their recommendation. But in support of your position, Mr. Kirby, today's Wall Street Journal supports your comments very well and I encourage people to get the Wall Street Journal. It's for free for teachers, public schools, and the governor's office can probably get it for free if they want to. If you get your information on TikTok, you're not going to get the information you get by reading the paper. And today's paper had a quote, "World's Health Organization indicated that children, even if they do get infected," and I'm very, you know, we have to read and you get educated on it. That's how I get my education, by reading. And we all get it from different aspects. And as a parent, I get confused, but as a board member, I have a responsibility to look as much as I can. As I told Mr. Weedman earlier today, I couldn't sleep this morning, so I have plenty of time to read. And I wanted to underline this quote here. "If children do get infected, they're less, they're not likely to transmit the COVID disease to other adults." We've not, this is the World Health Organization now that I'm quoting from today's Wall Street Journal. "We have not found a single instance of a child infecting parents." And then further, it goes, it indicates that the WHO recommend WHO, meaning the World's Health Organization, recommends against masking children under five and typically, and very rarely to recommend masking children, meaning a mask like we're wearing today, between the ages of six and 11. So with that, my colleagues, what I'm trying to say is, I'm all over the board on this. Just like all parents, we're all educators and we're all taking this very seriously. I want the public to know, but I'm very proud of our administration doing everything they can. But the governor's office did confuse us tremendously. The only comment I would make would be, I was upset on Friday. The governor's office had put on pause and then two hours later I get, receive an email indicating the opposite. So who do we turn to? This is a moving target, like I said before. So I know it's very stressful for everybody, but I do want to stress to the parents out there that the Board of Education, the teachers, the principals, the cabinet, our superintendent, everybody involved, is putting health first and we're on the right path. But it is confusing when the top in Lansing, one week says one thing and turns it around two weeks later. And I just wanted to get that off my chest. Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Others?
Just to clarify, the two school outbreaks that we can identify, those did not occur recently. Correct? Those were?
Those, those two, and we do have one that were, that might have in the recent seven days, but we haven't identified that yet, but those were in the past.
Okay.
Yep. And again, that's, the definition of an outbreak is two COVID positives in a classroom. So.
I just like to add that I appreciate how time is spent to get behind the numbers to see exactly what the numbers represent rather than look at a gross number that's published in a newspaper or an article or on TV or, and a good example of that is the athletics and how through all the testing that the high school athletic association has tracked, the positive rate is still under 3% and that's well below what the state number is right now. So the intimation of school sports being behind this increase in the state, I think is grossly unfair and it's unfair to our students who should be participating, who are taking great care to be able to play and along with our coaches that lead them. And I think that's where, just what you referred to, Ben, you're getting behind the numbers to find out what really is the story and not just rely on gross numbers that are produced by various agencies.
Yeah, if I could just add a few more. I think it's just really important too to understand that when we're, when we're hearing the governor's struggle with the entire state and that's, you know, that's everybody and everybody has their own circumstance. And they've always said, you know, work with your locals and, you know, we continue to work with OCHD. Even our county is completely, you know, different in a lot of realms. To Jim's point, OAA, which is another athletic association here in Oakland County, Oakland Athletic Association, they had tested 4,431 tests so far. They did 27 positives. So that's, that's their whole conference. Our whole conference hasn't been able to put that together yet. They're going to be, once we do that, I mean, obviously we'll share that. But yeah, we do have to keep the students in mind and I think that we are doing that and not easy. You know, there's no question. And I think that we have, we feel like we're continuing to lead with empathy, understanding every side. And this, this whole situation really has a lot to do with how it affects people personally as to how they react to it. And we, we do empathize with that and understand that and try to support every individual that, you know, reaches out to us and that we're aware of. So. Anything else before I move into the extended COVID-19 plan update? Okay. Julie's going to work the slides and, and there isn't going to be, you know, a lot of information change-wise, but I will go over the presentation as I have each month this week. Go ahead and go to the next, next page, Julie. Again, this guiding data, the areas, the factors, the things that we continue to talk about. The operating school safely document has not changed. That is all still in place. All the mitigation strategies that we utilize, none of that has changed. There has been a discussion from the CDC as far as the effectiveness of actually, you know, cleaning and wiping as much as they originally had said. We still are cleaning and wiping as much as we were scheduled to in our plan and we plan to continue to do that in the, in the short term and we'll continue to evaluate that. We're working with OCHD. Test, the results for test still are, you know, very quick. The district COVID data per 10,000, that's the, those are the pieces that people are most uncomfortable about, understandably so. The number is as high as it's been. The, the last time our number was close to that was November 12th. And I think it's just really important to understand that where we were in November, where we are today is completely different. Our knowledge about the virus, the vaccinations, the number of people that are able to avoid quarantines based on decisions that they've made have all helped us with our ability to operate. The positivity rate is 16.1%. That is the most current data for Oakland County. I just pulled that this afternoon. So actually, the presentation you guys got, it's different than that, just simply because, you know, now that I look at it, I'm thinking that the one is.
I, I forgot to pull up.
Yeah, it's actually 15.4. So as I was talking through that, yeah, it dropped down. So the last seven days, it has dropped or stayed the same. So that's encouraging, but it hasn't dropped immensely. It's dropped a couple of points, a couple of points. So at any rate, hopefully it continues in the, in the right direction. But yes, it is down to 15.4%. Our governor talked a little bit again today and I guess I just, you know, want to emphasize that the rates, the factors in our state that have to do with the variant, the B-117 is, is what they're telling us. And certainly the fatigue, which we all feel and we all have experienced and we hear a lot about. And then obviously the number of healthy individuals that we've had, you know, in our state to, you know, acquire the virus have all, you know, made impacts on that. So we are definitely in a different spot with having that high number and still being able to operate effectively. Next slide. So again, the, the top piece here, the operational impact, our operational impact is, you know, things haven't been easy. I mean, I'll be very clear. It's been very challenging. You know, we talked, she's talking about her students and this person's in quarantine and that person's in quarantine and that is our reality and we're continuing to work through that and work with our staff. But let me be very clear, it is not easy. It is very challenging to do the work that we're doing and do it effectively. But the number of But the number of vaccinations that our staff have had have really helped our operations and have kept, you know, people, you know, working and providing consistency. That has been something that was really important for both the staff and, and our parents through the thought exchange. And we wanted to continue to, to work with that. Our experiences have been, this is very challenging but manageable. And this is like a day-to-day check. We're checking with our principals, we're checking our, you know, our attendance data, our clear-to-go data. And we're, we're doing it every single day. Just wanted to share with you today to give you some perspective around the clear-to-go data. We have 29 staff that failed the clear-to-go, which means they had, you know, one of those, one of those symptoms and whatnot. It doesn't mean that they were positive, but we have overall eight staff that are currently positive. 22 of those staff that failed the clear-to-go are non, non-teachers. And so I bring that up because obviously, that's what our students feel primarily is when our, when teacher's gone. That is most impactful, but 22 of those 29 are non, non-teachers. As far as our students, today we had 658 that are in quarantine. As you look at that, that's about right around nine percent of student population. Forty-three of those students report to be positive, and that gives you a little bit of a, little bit of an indication. In our high school, today we had, we did the ACT work keys. Seventy-four percent of those students that were scheduled to come in today came in. So, you know, that's, you know, that's good. They, that was an option this year. They did not have to come in, and 74% of our students did come in. Of the ones that didn't come in, 30 of them were quarantined and didn't have that choice. So there's basically 100 students that chose not to come in. So just to give you a little bit of idea on that. Just to remind everybody, the health order that we're under is through April 19th. We haven't heard what's happening after that, but I'm sure we'll be informed sometime in the very near future. Go ahead to the next slide. So as far as our elementary program, there are no changes. We're gonna continue to move forward. We do have seven flipped classrooms currently. And when I say flipped classrooms, I mean that the teacher and the students are moved to remote instruction due to a, a positive COVID test. But we do currently have seven. Okay, next slide. Elementary, or excuse me, middle school. Did want to mention on the middle school, we did amend, the high school, or excuse me, the middle school administration worked with their staff on how they were delivering instruction. They were in a block format. There was a push to move to the, their daily schedule so that each class is seen each day. So they have moved to that, they have informed parents of that, and they are moving forward to that, and they've gotten some good feedback. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. And our middle school students are part of the, the student athletes being tested on a weekly basis, so.
Ben, did that change in the middle school occur after spring break?
We recommended, was it the first day of after spring break? Yeah, you're welcome. Any questions on elementary and middle school before I move forward? I forgot to pause, sorry. Okay, so Pine Tree, again, no changes. We're continuing to move along well there. Learning options is on the next slide. And again, the only change of learning option is any stu, any students that are participating in athletics would be participating in the weekly testing. At Lake Orion High School, again, the only change that is going to be occurring, it doesn't have anything to do with the instructional, but just the obligation to be testing the student athletes weekly. So as far as our instructional format, there is no change in any of our, any of our levels, so. And lastly, you know, I just, I just can't emphasize enough that, you know, every little thing that we do, you know, makes a big difference. Every, for every individual, every household, all of these things mean something different. Bottom line is, we all have the same goal of keeping our students in school, trying to keep them out of quarantine, trying to keep them not getting sick. So every, every little bit that we do is gonna help everyone of our kids. So we do need to continue to collaborate as a community. So in short, no changes with our instructional programs as we move forward is what I'm recommending. Other questions?
Ben, can I ask you some questions about attendance as it relates to some of the changes you alluded to?
We'll do our best.
And specifically, when you go to the website under the transparency section of the COVID information there, there's some documents there that are tracking in, in pretty great detail, the attendance. And can, is, is it possible that, or if, and this is not prepared tonight, I get this. If we could review that, because there's, I have a lot of questions about numbers on that page and, and how it, how it really looks for attendance with us and what happens when kids are in quarantine and...
Yeah, so one thing to note is what we have on there is more than what's required. I guess I just want to share that to begin with. If you look at other districts, there's much more minimal information. Heidi has, has a good awareness of, do you want to go ahead and just try to give a snapshot as to what the hell was saying? And that would be helpful.
Say something.
Okay, so in regards to attendance this year, obviously, there has been some different guidelines that we are able to follow. There are a lot of these, obviously, because of the COVID situation. But the biggest code, I think, that we need to understand is something that is called C2. And what teachers are doing is anytime that there is any two-way interaction with a student, that is how the attendance is being tracked. So it is labeled C2. That is how the state is seeing it. That, and we have to keep track of that two-way communication. So whether, you know, the student be in person, whether the student be in quarantine, part of the drug and virtual, the requirements this year say across the district, we have to have 75% that are participating in regard to 30 days. Okay, so we have not taken it for, you know, like, for the 30 days. We do not require just the teacher to mark one C2. We're tracking attendance every single day. But the overall requirement of the state has been lapsed, so to speak, because of what that's not the situation that we're dealing with, that we are tracking attendance in a different way. So it's all part of that C2. It's all part of the, it has to be a two-way communication. And that can be several different ways of communicating. It could be turning in an assignment on a particular day with the teacher, giving feedback on it. It could be a phone call, it could be just a regular email. So there's a list of what qualifies regarding this two-way communication.
And that's all from the legislature, right? That was in that legislation that required that? So if, if a high schooler's on quarantine and they don't do office hours, or they choose not to for whatever reason, how are they getting any attendance?
They're being sent to work home. So the teacher doesn't have to hold office hours.
So for that, so...
It can be put online, and, and as soon as the student turns in an assignment and the teacher provides feedback.
That's it.
That's participation.
And those students that are captured in that aren't the in-person students that are quarantined? That is the, that's our virtual program, correct? Or is that...
And, and the students that are quarantined.
It does have our quarantine, okay, okay.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you. I'll fill that up with questions.
Yeah, I did have a few, but in your presentation, Ben, we talked about, did you say it was 653 absent due to quarantine?
Yes, I did give a number of the, number of students that were quarantined.
Was that today?
That was, so I gave a number of today, so tomorrow, there's another number, so there's a bunch that'll drop off and a bunch that'll add. So yes, that was today's number.
The only question...
So it continues to roll.
I understood, the only question I had about today was, the high school is at limited attendance. So is the vast majority, or is the majority of that 653 being counted as the students who, from K, K to eight, that should have been in school today?
No, the, the, the cases are created, and then those cases continue. So if that student was, you know, scheduled to, or not scheduled to come in, there's still a case.
Okay.
So that's the number of cases that are active that's in our clear-to-go.
Okay.
And frankly, it was 18 more, I think there was today than yesterday. It wasn't a huge amount. It was a, you know, it was, it was a smaller amount as far as total cases.
And that, and that's the students that have, for lack of better term, failed clear-to-go?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So there, there could have, there could be more students not in attendance beyond that number?
Sure, yes, yes. So there's, yeah, there's gonna be other reasons to not be in school. Yep, and that captures those that failed the clear-to-go based on the protocols that we have for the health, health screening.
Now, if a student isn't in attendance and the parent simply called, they could be out. The parent could just, oh, well, they're not gonna be here for a couple of weeks, but they didn't fill out clear-to-go. Would we have any way of knowing that these additional, that there are additional potential issues? Because the, the circumstance that comes to mind is, a student has, is diagnosed with a fever, gets sent home, but they get tested, the parent doesn't call back and say that kid was positive. So are, do we have a mon, a way to monitor that to say, you know, what's happening with those students? What's happening in these situations to make sure that we, especially in a case like that where you could have had a COVID-positive student in the class? Are we following up to make sure that, that, that students being sent home or not in attendance? We are finding out if they're COVID-positive?
Yeah, so each, each building is, obviously has relationships with all their families and whatnot, and that's where that communication comes in. They actually call into their offices, and then there's conversation. So Rick, I don't know if you want to speak to any of the processes that Jake's referring to?
Yeah, so each building, someone is responsible to monitor attendance. And at the high school where we have the largest number, we have an attendance secretary. That individual's responsible for maintaining the database of clear-to-go. There's a code, as Heidi indicated, that clear-to-go students who are required to quarantine because of whatever reason they, they were exposed, or someone's waiting to be tested or so forth. That group, we can pull that number aside. We can run a report for those students that are not in attendance. We have not changed our policy on how we handle those kids who are not in attendance. If we see a consistency or a problem, those families are then reached out to. And it's, hey, your kid hasn't been here in three days. We don't have a call in, there's, there's a verification. The same thing happens in all the elementaries and the middle schools. We have codes available to us, yes, we can monitor who's not here. And if it's just a one-day absence, there's not a follow-up. But if we see that there's a consistent issue, yes, those are flagged and monitored, and families are followed up with.
One of the things that we do operationally, especially during this, you know, really challenging time, like I said, this is really challenging, and we're constantly, you know, trying to stay in contact and understand what's going on, is we know what the daily attendance is at our buildings. You know, our elementary buildings are in the 70s, 80s, 90%. So I get a daily, I have a daily update on what that looks like, just so that we know, you know, what's going on. You know, same at the, same at the high school. When we looked at, when we made the decision for last Friday, we knew where our attendance rate was at the high school, which was right around 70%. And it was, it was give or take 5% all through the week. So we knew, you know, where we were at. You know, we talked a while back about wanting to have about 80% of our students in and thinking that that would, that would be good, but knowing all the factors of what today looked like or then looked like, we weren't concerned about that. In fact, some people looked at that as it was a, a positive because people, you know, were removing their students or they were, you know, our, our capacity was less and whatnot, and we're still able to educate. And there have been some changes with students that aren't in and how to support them before the actual, you know, school starts at the high school and so on. So we are getting those daily updates. I don't typically like create a spreadsheet for them and, you know, follow the, you know, trends over time and, and all of that. Is that, this is very day-to-day, and it's very important for us to know, you know, what's going on with them. But we are watching the attendance very closely.
And the flip side too would be, for example, last week or last, and this week too, the stomach flu's been going around in our community. We can't automatically assume that if a child's absent for two or three days, it's because of COVID. So we have to take that into consideration as one factor. But Ricky indicated that there is a staff attendant at the high school, correct?
Hey, we have an attendance secretary.
Correct.
That's her sole responsibility.
And I know they're overwhelmed, but I do know as a parent that when I did call in for Michael and Andrew last week, the recording indicated no need to leave a message. So maybe they were overwhelmed, but at the same token, that is being followed by a person on web to see that. So you don't have to leave a message, is what the recording indicated.
Okay, I'm not sure what the recording had, but...
Heidi, do you know what I'm talking about?
But that's the change. It was that you had to, Mr. Stevens, tell over a year ago that you had to report your student absent, and that is no longer, parents do not have to call in to report their student absent because we don't mark whether it's a student or an excuse. But the secretary will then follow up based on what we're saying, if it's more than a particular day.
So it's clear...
Parents still get the, still get the phone call though, saying that this child was not...
Even if it's one day then? All right, I just clarified that I wasn't sure on that. Thank you.
Ben, just go for what Stephen was saying really quick. You mentioned, I think it was 658 students in quarantine? Or is that 658 students that have failed the clear-to-go app?
Failed the clear-to-go app, which would be combined positives and quarantines, yes.
Okay, do we know the number of quarantines because of COVID cases?
That is what the clear-to-go tracks.
But it would also, as Stephen said, there is like stomach flu, you know, other, other things that people would fail the clear-to-go app, but not necessarily be in quarantine because of COVID.
Right, so part of the, there's a number of columns, I don't even know how many, but Shannon does that. She keeps notes as to whether it's a positive test, it's an exposure, and other items. I don't even know is...
Did I take that?
Yeah.
When there's a failure in clear-to-go of a student, there's a follow-up by the administration, that the secretaries of administration, they follow up as to why the failure took place. And based on why the failure took place, what the recommendations are. So, and to be clear, to fail clear-to-go, you have to have multiple symptoms of a certain degree that would put you in a category as potentially having the COVID virus. So there are some, like a stomach flu, you have to have two or more symptoms that's potentially. And then in the clear-to-go, the recommendation is you should, I don't know exactly what it does, but if you have two or more of these symptoms, you need to quarantine and/or get tested. There's a whole direction on what you should be doing. I think it's also important to note, you know, those numbers of 600 and whatever it is, 50 some that are in quarantine, it's from a number of reasons. They've been exposed, someone in the household awaiting a test result, a number of different things. But of all those, and Ben, I don't want to take your number away, but I believe it was 30 some that are actually positive of the 600 and some. So you're looking at 30 some out of 600 is what percentage?
I think it's important too to, to remember that when we say, for instance, flipped an elementary classroom, those students are in quarantine, they show up and clear-to-go, but the whole class is still getting that instruction from that, that teacher. So it's not a, you know, necessarily a failed proof like tell-all information source, but it certainly gives us an idea of the number of students that we have that are being affected by, by the virus.
Yeah, so the reason why attendance has become an issue, so obviously, our mission is to provide an exemplary education for all learners, and we do all believe that in-person instruction is the best way to do that. But at some point, and we've had those points this year, where we've determined that another model of instruction was a better way to educate our students, you know, in, in terms... of instruction was a better way to educate our students, you know, in, in terms of safety, in terms of being able to make, you know, reach as many students as possible on any given day. And, uh, I, I reached out to Burge today and I actually said, I have avoided, when we go to the conferences, MAFB, the Michigan Association of School Boards, for example, they'll have meetings on attendance. But those have always, we haven't had a large truancy, chronic absenteeism problem. So as a board, we've never had to monitor attendance. But there are many districts in the state where the board is giving the superintendent a, a, a primary goal of get students there. Where just not enough students show up every day and we, we've gotta pick that. We don't have that. But this year, those concerns creep in, in, into the mind. When I hear that only seventy percent of the students are there, that's almost a third of the students who aren't getting educated that day. And that's concerning. And, and, and just to understand how all of that fits together is what we as a board would, are. Fair enough. But to make sure that, how do these attendance figures relate to the goal of maximizing education? Cause you make a fair point that, okay, so of this seventy percent, you know, some are, there's, there's split classrooms, there's other things they can be doing to get educated. But that's the nagging concern right now for me as a board member that, you know, you know, we, we chose this strategy to stay in person. And the oversight function is, where is the data that shows that we're still able to accomplish the mission of educating these students? And that's, that's what the board to discuss to say, what ideas we might have, but more so, what ideas do you have? You're the professional educator. So what data are you looking at that makes you feel comfortable? And is there any way to share that with us so that, that this pit of my stomach feeling that says, when I hear seventy percent, it's good to hear you, you to put some context to it, but, so that was the discussion.
Well, Jay, I can put you at ease as a parent. I know that most of the children that do not report to the school, for example, I can speak to the high school that I've been COVID following and the middle school. All, all the schools, they have, right away, the teachers are in contact with them. They get online, they report, they take exams from home, for example. They learn from home. They got the computer in front of them. The teachers there are communicating with them. And that's the nice thing about that we're able to combine the two. So the fact that they're not coming in, a lot of the parents are not sending the children in because they do have symptoms, for example, or they are sick, or they are quarantined is the best example, the quarantine situation. The children have an option or are required. They are getting educated at home with the teacher, with the computer, and are doing very well with that and are even taking exams from home. Am I correct, Ms. Mercer?
Yeah. And another thing too is that we are still cracking and reporting students.
That's a difference, right. I think that's the big, the big piece, Jake, is that it's not that these students aren't participating. They're not, they're just not in person as they were scheduled to be, so they're getting an alternate type of, an education. And the high schools made some adjustments as far as, you know, how they're serving students before the actual school day starts and, and whatnot, different than where they were in the fall, which is really making, you know, a positive impact and a difference. And so things we, we can't look at it the way that it, you know, what missing school used to be is a lot different than now. And now what it means is our staff is working harder to connect with those kids. And they have been very diligent and have been very, um, you know, honored to be part of a system that, uh, they have really attacked, uh, the situation when students are missing school.
So in the, in, in the example like Steve gave where, you know, a student takes an exam from home, then do they get classified using the term you used earlier as a C two because they have contact? So is that, so that leads to the question, is that data that we would have to say, okay, well, seventy percent of the students were in attendance, but do, how often do we get, or do we review the, or do you review the C two number to say, okay, well, it may have been seventy percent, but, but ninety percent of the students had a two-way contact that day. Are we, is that something that's actively monitored? I just wanna get that feeling for what data is out there because anecdotally, I get that there's this contact. But, you know, trust but verify and data verifies.
So would it be possible to maybe put together a, a little modeling of this for our next meeting? And just kind of review what you look at in terms of the seventy to ninety range of who's participating and in what form? That might ease Jake's mind.
Well, I'm trying to figure out wh- wh- what it is because, uh, say the thirty percent that aren't in school, I mean, they're getting, they're getting educated in multiple different ways. And so, I mean, it's not a number. You know, that's the thing that I, you know, trying to wrap my head around is I'm listening. Yeah, it's, there's a number of different, um, angle strategies. And you look at our special education, you know, we, you heard, I really talk about all the great things that our staff is doing and, you know, none of that's captured in numbers, it's captured in creative ways to meet the students' needs. And that's what we're doing with regular education as well. So I, I guess I don't know how to put a number to, um, your discomforting of gut, like, you know what I mean? Cause that's what you had mentioned. Frankly, we're all, we all wish that it was, uh, I don't know if easy is the right word, but, you know, the, the traditional easier way to, to track and, and understand student engagement. We used to be talking about student engagement in class, right? But we're not talking about that anymore. We're talking about different ways to get students engaged and it's not sitting in front of the, uh, teacher all the time. Um, I guess I just, I would ask you to, um, understand and, and, um, you know, trust that the building administration, the district administration is monitoring daily and communicating daily and regularly. And the, the teachers, the teachers are the ones that are getting it done with the students. The principals, like, for example, the high school, I, at eleven o'clock, they have a report out on where their attendance, their attendance is for all of their administration. And then that comes over to us so that we're aware of what it is. And then they're looking at it. If they have any concerns, they're communicating to us. So, I mean, it's, the focus on attendance is greater than it normally is. I guess I would just share that it takes up a lot of our time.
I mean, this is a tough, a tough question, but is there, what would, what would, could there be a situation where attendance developed? And I'll say developed because hopefully we're coming out of the, the other side of the roughest couple of weeks, the, the week after spring break. But, you know, was there something that would have triggered you to say, well, we're just not getting enough in-person attendance? So it would be better to do flipping an entire, flip an entire building, flip the entire district? That would go remote because the amount of interaction would have increased. So I, I guess, it, was there a parameter you were looking at al- along those lines related to attendance or some other figure?
So i- it's different at every level, right? So elementary, you, you know, as far as how that feels when you have a number of quarantines, it, you know, it's much less. We, we used to, in the fall, we were talking about if we had two, two flipped, then we probably need to shut that school down. The two, um, classrooms in a building, like that was our concept with, uh, consultation with the health division. We know a lot more about it now. We know how well our staff is doing when they are flipping. Um, that's not even a consideration at this point. It's about operational. Um, we, you know, you have that number, but then you spread it out amongst the number of teachers. And we, we are looking at recommendations from, you know, the administrators as if they're concerned about, you know, the number of kids that are unable to, um, get their traditional, what their traditional schedule is. Um, there is no, um, hard and fast number. There was a point in time in October, we were looking at twenty percent. We felt like if there was twenty percent that weren't attending, that we may look, need to look at something different. You know, we were at thirty percent, we were thirty percent, but we were still, um, able to operate. I don't want to use the word comfortable, but we were able to operate and still move forward because we now have some strategies in place that we didn't have in place in October to deal with those students that are not able to be in person. Um, so there is no, you know, there is no number. But I, you know, if we get it fifty percent, I mean, that tells you that we've got a problem with COVID within our school, right? So then at that point, it, you know, when you look at that, what we're talking about is if we were to flip or, uh, whatnot, it would be about transmissions, like heavy transmissions in school. That's the point that we're really thinking that there's a health and safety issue. We know that we've got transmissions occurring in the school. There is no one number. And I wish I could tell you one number and we often look at it and pay attention to it, but it's just such a combination.
I guess that's, what helps provide some overview is, we did hear things back in the fall. And we're not as, you, you are working on it literally every day, like I have.
Well, I think that's true. I think you're making a great point, Jake, that we just talked about getting behind the numbers. They do that all day, every day. We don't. So there has to be an element of trust here that there is a system in place that we've approved and that we've all agreed to as a board as our plan to go forward. And that we're turning the, the operation that over to the people who are doing it all day, every day. And saying, we trust what you're doing. And, uh, it's impossible for us to get behind all those numbers. We can get a general overview, but I don't think we can get to the level of detail to be in, in, in any kind of position, make any kind of decisions on the minutia of day-to-day operations. So I, I appreciate where you're going with it, but we could be here all night probing at those numbers and I don't think we'll ever get there.
Understood. And that's where that helps now because, but to, to go to the other, to, to say, I'm there with you. It's a, it's a, it's a method of evaluation because as a board, that's, you know, oversight function. But when we get that information and, and the, the, the things you've told us about, okay, things are different than they were before. And we do have a better ability to educate students. So if someone was listening at home and they heard thirty percent of the students aren't here, they might have had what I have. But then it gets, that doesn't mean thirty percent aren't being educated.
And that's why.
Every kid that's absent from now on will be taught, you log on, you see what's there and you go do it. So the improvements that we have, like, you know, we've learned things that we wish we didn't have to learn them in this manner. But I agree that, that.
But I appreciate the fact that you're probing because it is a clarifying activity and that's great.
And, and you have given me more comfort that, the things that you're evaluating and we have, because we have other ways of educating students. And the other thing you said, you're not locked into this. If you, if the district needed to be flipped, you have shown that willingness. So this isn't stubbornness. This is still data-driven decisions that say, we still believe, we evaluate every day what we're doing. And the reason we stayed open was because at the local level, the suggestion from the governor was not relevant, given the preponderance of the data that we had in our district. So.
Well, yes. And yes, I would, I would confirm, we will continue to lead with empathy and look at the whole picture when making our decision.
Can I just ask one more quick clarification question? Um, okay, so six hundred and fifty-eight kids in quarantine. Let's say tonight I got a call and saying, you know, a parent was exposed, he's excluded from school. Does he automatically enter the clear to go system as a fail? Because I wouldn't necessarily the next day, obviously, since he's not going into a building, hit the clear to go app, you know? Does he automatically somehow get entered into the system as a, because we're talking about six hundred and forty-eight clear to go failures?
When some, when a student is, I'd use the word forced, but when, when a student is forced to quarantine.
Subject to quarantine.
Yeah. Subject to quarantine because of exposure at school. The clear to go failures are taken care of by the district.
I just wanted to make that, um, and then I also just kind of wanted to point out there, I'm assuming, and maybe you can speak to this, there are still a number of students that are self-selecting to not come to school, whether because of discomfort, um, parents' part, or because their sports teams, you know, they're afraid to get exposed and be excluded from sports. So the seventy percent doesn't, necessarily mean we have thirty percent of sick kids. It just means.
Right. And the sports team, um, isn't an option in the spring season. There was, there was some, uh, I believe some exceptions and decisions made at the, um, during the state tournament for varsity level. Only that wasn't, that isn't a change in policy. So that's not a, a, a reason to not come to school. But yes, there are families that are still self-selecting and they are parent choices. And again, we'll lead with empathy and, and support them in their, in their beliefs and.
Right. And, and they do have the ability, like especially at the high school, you know, I think we talked about this at other board meetings too, that in the two hours of teachers are there before the, you know, in-person students get there. But the students do have the opportunity to, you know, Microsoft Teams or Zoom or whatever that looks like with their teachers, should they, you know, be in quarantine or whatnot, you know, they, they have opportunity to do so, correct?
I, yeah. And I will clarify however, if, if we have a student, the choice was right, in person or driving or. So a student cannot make the choice at this point that they are in person to just stay home for the rest of the year.
Okay.
Now, they can choose to stay home, right, for a short period of time, whether, you know, whatever the situation may be. But it is not that they can just say, oh, you know, I'm gonna now stay home, you know, stay home for the remainder of the year. That is not the case. So I wanna make that very clear.
Right.
That, you know, a short period of time, sure, that attendance is trapped and like I said, will become a truancy.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to, more specifically clarify. Yeah.
All right. Are we good for the moment on, uh, this topic? Yeah. Okay. Great.
Well, I lost for a math, but I think I'm done.
I was gonna give you another shot here.
No, I, I, those were all of my items and.
All right. Great. Thank you, Beth. And, you know, it's comforting to know that the amount of detail that goes into this plan is really what drives it. It's not relying on, uh, one or two single areas or numbers or got a single guidance. It's really very wide and very deep. And, uh, and the parents in this district should be very pleased about it and very thankful for that level of detail. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
All right. So we'll move on to student achievement and Heidi.
All right. Couple of things this evening. Um, first of all, uh, this has been the week of testing. Uh, we have begun state testing. Um, I believe, I don't know if I mentioned at the last board meeting or not, but, um, as you know, the state put in a waiver to the feds to have the requirement to offer the test. The wave that was not granted. So, uh, obviously we weren't prepared, um, but we legally have to offer the test. Um, students do not have to take it this year. Um, hence why on the agenda, um, you see a memo regarding the graduation requirements um, that needs to be adjusted because again, um, the test was not required. We do have, um, in our graduation requirements, where MME and all of its parts are part of Legorian's graduation requirement. However, since, um, the state has come out and said, um, along with the feds, that it is not a requirement for this year, obviously we have to change our graduation requirements.
So will this in any way change the designation? Is there, does the state have, is a Michigan merit diploma or anything like that? Other states have that, but Michigan doesn't have that, right?
No. There's, and it's a local decision whether you require the pass for graduation.
Just so people can hear that this doesn't, in no way impairs the diploma by excluding this requirement. This is a local decision and it's the same diploma that you would have gotten before.
Absolutely. And you see in your memo that the, that the, I'm only asking for this requirement to be waived for the group of students that is impacted, not beyond that. So it would still remain part of our requirement, um, for those students. In regards to Dragon Virtual, we'll update there. Um, we are pretty much, uh, scheduled at the high school. They're working on finalizing that. But we have about a hundred students right now that, um, are asking for Dragon Virtual at the high school level. Uh, middle school, um, the numbers, I believe, are around. Uh, I can't remember that off the top of my head. They're lower obviously than high school, but enough to run. Um, and so those students are working on scheduling that now. And then the first week in May, we will be asking all of our elementary families to choose for next year whether they are choosing in-person or Dragon Virtual, which then we will have an idea and begin scheduling the elementary. So.
Yeah, I was just gonna clarify. I wasn't sure where you were going with those numbers, but then I figured out, this is for next year.
Correct.
You're speaking to interest for the high school and middle school for next year, Dragon Virtual.
We're in we're knee-deep in scheduling season, yes. For our schools of choice, this has a little bit of impact. You know that we offered both in-person and Dragon Virtual. The students have to select one or the other. So the window is not closed yet, but as of today, we had eighty-four in-person applicants and then fourteen Dragon Virtual. And the Dragon Virtual are pretty spread out throughout the grades. So again, that window doesn't close until May sixth, May fifth or sixth. So we still have a little bit of time there.
And those would be new schools of choice, not like.
Yes. And then remember, it doesn't mean that, you know, all of those will get in at this point in time. There's a lot of work that has to be done once the window closes. So. All right. And then I know that Mark has put together some learning highlights for teaching and learning. There's the cost of living adjustment, so we're required to do that, but the board has to approve it. So that is just a regular standing item each year. So there you have that. And then I'm gonna switch to Bond. Tonight is a bade night regarding the elementary furniture. And so you will see in your packet this evening that that has come through a recommendation. I have already presented to you the pilot teachers and their recommendations. We are very excited about this furniture. As I also stated, we are looking at year four, providing a professional development regarding the implementation of this furniture. So lots of exciting things there. In regards to our secondary furniture pilot, this week, we are switching the furniture. So the pilot teachers will be moving from their first pilot and will be having their second pilot of classroom furniture. So just so you are aware, we will pilot that until the start of the school year and then we'll work on narrowing that down, the same process as the elementary. So but I wanted you to know that we did, we are in the process of switching this week. Blamp Sims continues to meet. We are still working on the design. We're still in the beginning stages. But we have, as I reported before, we've concluded all of our tours, shared what we liked about the things we saw and what we prefer not to replicate in the new Blamp Sims. In addition, we have met specifically with the P E teacher, music teacher, art teacher, specialized patient and food service to be sure that we get their input on the building design as well. So that is still marching forward and continued progress there. Scripts, we are continuing to work on the office edition that will include some renovations in the media center as well. And so we're moving forward on that and getting real close that at some point soon, you should be seeing the plan come forward. Stadium and Pink Creek. Construction is in the beginning stages under secure entries and so you'll be seeing that. The entries and the main offices. And that with principals this past week to choose the fabrics for their office. And then also a meeting with carpenter Orion Oaks and Weber, meeting with their media specialist and their principal to pick out their fabrics for the media centers. And Weber's new wing is coming along very well. At some point, we'll be looking to get the order tour of that new wing. So but things are moving along very well. ECC continues to march along. We are very pleased at the progress of that building. We are right on schedule, if not slightly ahead of schedule. And as you drive by, I'm sure you can see the progress there in in the head tour. But I just wanted you to know that things are really, really going well there. And then we are gearing up for the high school to have this summer. Each classroom will be getting interactive flat panels, smart boards. And so we have had a team that has been walking around the room, making sure that, you know, where the smart board will go. And also working with some teachers on the specialized classrooms that will need different kinds of furniture and special attention. So that work is in progress as well. Any questions?
Questions? Questions for Heidi? That was right. I'm sorry. All right, here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So we'll move on to human resources and Rick, please.
Yes, Heidi alluded to earlier the schools of choice information. And I would like to reiterate that we're tracking as we did pre-COVID. So we're getting the number of applicants that we would expect. And the same holds true for our kindergarten, our kindergarten information night and online registration and so forth. We are in a place where we're tracking pre-COVID. So all indications for enrollment for next fall is like we're making that swing back to where we need to be. Knock on wood. Hope everything holds true to that point. And Mark did mention a little bit with his work with both of those, the SOC and I don't think he mentioned kindergarten. But I just want to thank him for all his work with getting both of those programs out there in the social media, developing the flyers, helping us get the word out. Without his assistance, I am sure we would miss a lot of those students. So I want to thank him for putting the time and effort into our enrollment. It's very beneficial and we appreciate it. That's all I got.
Okay. Questions for Rick? All right, thank you. Let's move on to finance and Jeff, please.
Good evening. On the agenda tonight are three bid awards. The first one up at bat is what's referred to as the consolidated bid award. It's really got multiple smaller projects rolled together. One is the bus wash replacement at station facility piece, res servicing and coating of the tennis courts and then electrical upgrades at the high school. And then there's a fourth piece that's in terms of a custom moving, preparing and preparing for one of the other lower-dowelling items for furniture being coming out. So the first one up in terms of the consolidated bid award, the scope is consists of electrical upgrades at the high school, some res servicing, as I said, of tennis courts. The electrical upgrades at the high school are really being driven by, Heidi had just recently mentioned about the smart boards and things come online. So there's a corresponding electrical upgrade that goes along with that. And then in terms of the the transportation facility, there's a, I'm not sure everybody's aware of this. We've got our in-house bus wash over there that we wash our buses. Our bus is our operational vehicle. Noda comes by, they use it and we have an arrangement worked out with them. That's roughly twenty years old, so it's not being replaced. So from a more specific point of view in terms of the bid aspect itself, before you for the technology, the electrical piece, the contractor looking to be awarded is an organization known as Y-Electric. And the specific piece there is located in page twenty-six. The electrical package itself is fifty-six thousand. There's another forty-four thousand, seven ninety and thirty-two hundred dollars associated with allowances, contingencies and some CMP and some bond requirements tied to it, totaling one oh four five thirty-one. The tennis court res servicing, contractors gather coatings, the recommended contractors gather coatings. The base work is seventy-eight thousand, two hundred. An additional twenty-two thousand, eight forty in allowances and some CMPs of just over two thousand tied to that for a total of one oh three oh sixty-two. The bus bus wash replacement process for the actual underlying package is one fifty-four, six sixty-seven. Additional contingency allowances of four and three, six sixty-seven and just under four thousand associated CMPs. And just to remind, I'm reading, actually identifying off page twenty-sixty of board package, it gets a little more detailed than than most of it is because of the consolidated piece. So and then the last piece in that package is really a package about furniture removal. The upcoming furniture replacement piece coming in in order to get everything prepped up. We've got to deal with the existing older furniture, how it's removed and how it's sort of re-displaced and those kinds of things. And that's what this piece is for. It's all in for that group, it's about fifty-four thousand, including the allowances associated with it. So from a summary point of view, administration is requesting authorization to execute contracts as presented for the scope of work as discussed, totaling three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars with an additional hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten for allowances, contingencies and the CM subpiece for a grand total of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Any questions on the package piece? Okay, questions?
Yeah, John, could you help me understand what usually these show a contingency? And this has states and allowances and contingencies and the numbers are pretty high. Can you help me understand?
Yeah, when the phrase allowances used, it's a known, the money's tied there are, we know we've got to do that piece. There's an estimated amount set aside to do it, so it's, we're gonna spend it. It's just got to be identified with a specific sub vendor for, for example, if there's yard cleanup allowances, that kind of stuff. That we know we're gonna spend that money. Then there's just your generic contingency piece of identified funding that's in reserve, so to speak. So when you tear into like the bus piece, if we tear or start tearing everything out and we discover problems in the walls that require more money to fix, that's where that would come out of that contingency piece. So when I, when you hear the phrase contingency and allowances, it's money that's being identified that for the first wave of quote-unquote allowances are, we know these things are gonna happen. It's got specifics that need to be tied down. And then the contingency piece is the, it's the money that's authorized to use if needed for things that are unforeseen. So that's the real difference between the two pieces. Can I help you with that?
Yeah. I had a question to go with that. So when you see the the general conditions and staff, that's for our project management team, not for, for example, the electrical team.
Right, that would be same people that's doing the actual physical work related to our rewall, our construction group rewall. Other questions? Next one, very good next one. This is titled, the video surveillance and door access control system. That title may might ring a bell, probably not, but might ring a bell. Last year, the was a much, it was a fairly large encompassing RFP that went out and was approved and awarded to Interstate Security. They had built into it unit pricing, knowing that we were going to be doing so many buildings at that point, so many more buildings this summer. So this is kind of thinking in terms of being phase two, utilizing the pricing from that contract. So there's four facilities being nailed in this, in this particular bid request. So the scope here is, as I said, the second phase of the four buildings. It includes new video systems in addition and the expansion of already existing door control access systems in those four buildings. So in unit pricing, as I mentioned, is already established from last year's RFP, so that's carried forward. And then funding for all of these, these four parts will continue to be out of the the bond programs or bond funding. So in terms of the actual recommendation here, the we're asking the board to authorize and finalize and execution of an additional contract to Interstate, Interstate Security. You may see, depending upon how much detail you went into the actual packaging, you may hear the phrase change order. So from a functional point of view, if the board approves this, it'll be handled through a change order process and dealing with the vendor. But it's from from the actual award and authorization point of view, we're treating it as a new contract let out tied to this program or tied to an existing approved RFP. So it's totaled breakdown to two hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and one cent for the programming and additional twenty-nine thousand, one forty-four for contingency, and that's a traditional contingency. And in the actual board packet, if you move to page, I did not mark it on there. It's a better breakout on page thirty-seven as to what the actual two ninety-one consists of in terms of the specific line items within that, within that bid package. Any questions on that one? Questions about this bid packet? Okay, onto the furniture award. This is the one that Heidi's evaluating. And Heidi can speak to the length, the depth and the scope of what was all done. She's mentioned and talked through many times through different bond updates. But from a pure bid award point of view, the scope is the new furnishings for classrooms, media centers, extended learning areas and building offices from within Carpenter, Orion Oaks, Pink Creek, Stadium, Weber and the new early childhood center for this this round. Some some information on the actual process, there's a formal bid let out on February fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. We got we got bids back on March two and opened, publicly opened March two, twenty twenty-one. At that point, the district personnel and GMB sat down and waited through many, 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 many lines of items bid on. The nature of the furniture procurement process, there's so many different choices and selections and when you go and you open up to a bid scale, our program broken down to really six categories and then with each category, there's multiple subcategories. So that's why you see like in this first wave, first set of line here in terms of recommendation, I'll read off of in second, why it's broken into six different awards. The the value of that is that you're getting this wide scope of pricing based on a wide scope of choices. So theoretically meets the needs in more and much more detail in terms of, you know, Heidi's team in the district. So that piece in terms of itself, the first wave is a, it's recommended the board of education authorize the administration to finalize and execute contracts as presented to purchase furniture, should say furnishings in the amount listed for Custer Incorporated, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, one seventeen and fifty cents. Great Lakes Furniture Supply, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars even. KI Inc., thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Dwell Corporation, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety cents. Interior Environments, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. And Lake Shore Learning Store, forty-four thousand, nine sixty-three point thirty-one. For a total recommendation of this of this piece of it of one million, seven hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-four cents. With a bid program and request for information and what is being looked at in terms of what we want to acquire, that has this kind of scope, there's two breakout here is in terms of what's actually being requested the board to give us authorization to execute on. The first piece I just read falls purely under the traditional RFP bid world. The second piece, in the furniture world, the bulk of these companies also have standing cooperative-priced contracts, whether they're out in the national, I can't remember the full name of them now, the MPAC and then Mikey and those kinds of things. So depending upon what the bidders responded to specifically, what they wanted to bid on and any individual piece of a very massive RFP, specialized items that fell under existing contracts were identified and pulled out and sub-categorized on this next set of things I'm gonna read to you. So this piece, the second piece, it's recommended that the board of education authorize administration to procure additional furnishings from various vendors using their existing cooperative contract pricing not to exceed the amounts listed below. First vendor would be Custer Inc., sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Interior Environments, forty thousand, five hundred. Facilitex Solutions, I hope I pronounced that right, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents. And Arena Incorporated, a hundred and two thousand, four hundred dollars. For that subtotal being two hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents. For grand total authorization request of one million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Any questions?
I do. Tom, it's very important because we've tend to forget, this has been going on for a long time. Heidi and her committee, everybody involved, John, Rick, Mr. Kirby. But for the public to be reminded that this has been researched, well thought of, and they've done a great job to make sure that we got the best price, the best value. They even went out of state. Am I correct in this first year on this matter or not?
Two of our professionals at all that.
Correct. So with that said. It's been a long process. It's not like we're spending money without doing the research. Thank you.
I think you make a good point there too, Steve. You said a key word, good value. And a value is only good when it matches what we need and the price is is right. And all those factors figure into creating value and and I'm glad you brought that up. That's a very good point.
A little bit about, I forgot to mention, this is all funded through the bond program. This phase of bond program. Any questions? Okay, good. Okay, last but not least is. Okay, last but not least, is the, on the agenda, as you're aware, we participate in the School Loan Revolving Fund in the District. We have another opportunity before us to refund about 14 million dollars of existing debt with the intention of taking advantage of the still remaining, while they still remain, existing interest rate environment. I say while they still remain, things are creeping up. As we get through the next very large federal government funding program that's coming through, the infrastructure and those things, I fully expect that rates to climb. So this may be our last opportunity for a while to refund existing debt at a lower rate and save, save some money for the taxpayers in our district. But in this case, the resolution tonight, it authorized the issuance of not to exceed 15,250,000 of bonds to refund existing debt. It authorizes, and this is all in the format of all the resolutions we've done in the last, I want to say 10 years, authorize superintendent and/or the assistant superintendent, myself, to negotiate and execute necessary documents within the process. We are again using what's known as the negotiated sale format, particularly for this one, and particularly with the environment that's beginning to brew with the interest rates. So in terms of the advantage of using that approach, negotiated versus typical competitive approach, in this case, it gives us the opportunity to do some analysis on the market, make sure rates are where we want them to be while we do this. If for whatever reason, as weeks and time closes in on our planned refunding time, if things shift where the costs are on a whack in terms of interest base, it gives us an opportunity to pull, so we're not committing anything that will lose ground, so to speak. So we do expect to use our existing underwriter, Stevo Company again. And from a, from a, from a processing and timing point of view, we're in the process of developing the schedule, timeframe schedules of everything going process. It looks like we'll be doing refunding probably at the end of May, early June timeframe, assuming interest rates hold. Any questions?
Do you, do you have an estimate of?
Oh, yeah, I didn't mention that, did I?
What we think we'll save?
At this point, the ballpark estimate, I've got it highlighted on my sheet too. Projected a cost avoidance, which equates to savings, is about $600,000. Could be a little better, could be worse, as long as there's, there's also limitations in this, the resolution that we're asking you to approve tonight, that we have to meet certain savings thresholds, or we're not going to move forward either.
And just so that, if anybody understands, this is a routine action. This is not new debt, that the way the School Loan Revolving Fund works is if the timing of our bonds will require some years for us to pay off more bonds than we collect in the village, so we borrow from the state, and then in a year where we collect more than we have to pay off, it pays down the loan to the state. So right now, we have that loan balance with the state, and it, but it all derives from previous voter approved debt that went down. It's doing for us is giving us a better interest rate than we can get with borrowing money from the state. So that's where the savings comes in, and you've done this a few times and saved us several million dollars over the years, and we appreciate you staying on top of this.
You phrased the whole process very simply and very well. And knowing that we've recorded this meeting, I'm going to write that down, because whenever it gets questioned how the program really works, you know, me, I'm going into the weeds, but that was really pretty much the point. Others? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, so that brings us to action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move that we approve the following consent agenda items. Approved payment of the March bills in the amount of 7,576,074 and 19 cents. Also approved minutes from the March 24th, 2021 regular meeting. Approve out of state and overnight field trip requests for Scripps eighth grade students to Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, Washington DC, and Lou Ray, Virginia on June 12th through the 17th of 2022. Also approving Head Start Coordinator's report.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. We have motion to approve the Extended COVID Learning Plan.
I would move to approve the Lake Orient Community Schools Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan Update for April and compliance with Pulp Act 149, section 98A as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of approving the Extended COVID Learning Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The Extended COVID Learning Plan is approved. We'll move on. We have a motion to approve graduation requirement revisions.
I move to approve waiving the graduation requirement of taking the MME for the graduating classes of 2021 and 2022 as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the graduation requirement revision, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Graduation requirement revision is approved. We have a motion to approve the Head Start and Early Head Start Cost of Living Adjustment.
A move that we approve a 1.22% cost of living adjustment, a COLA increase for Head Start and Early Head Start Programs from January 1st through December 31st, 2021 as presented.
Thank you. Is there support? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The Head Start, Early Head Start Cost of Living Adjustment is approved. We have a motion to authorize Consolidated Bid Award for Bus Wash, Tennis Courts, and Lake Orion High School Electrical Upgrades.
I move to authorize administration to execute contracts for a bus wash, tennis courts, Lake Orion High School Electrical Upgrades, and furniture removal in the aggregate amount of 328,767 dollars with a 135,910 dollar contingency for a total allocation of 464,677 dollars as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The Consolidated Bid Award for Bus Wash, Tennis Courts, and Lake Orion High School Electrical. And I have a motion to authorize Video Surveillance and Door Access Control Systems Bid Award.
I move to authorize administration to execute a contract with Interstate Security to purchase and install video surveillance and door access control system not to exceed 291,442 dollars and one cent with a 29,144 dollars and 20 cents contingency for a project total of 320,586 dollars and 21 cents as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you.
Lots of support.
There you go. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The Video Surveillance and Door Access Control System Bid Award is approved. We have a motion to authorize Furniture Bid Award.
A move to authorize administration to execute contracts to purchase furniture from the following vendors. Custer Incorporated in the amount of 593,117 dollars and 50 cents. Great Lake Furniture Supply in the amount of 557,525 dollars. KI Inc. in the amount of 35,749 dollars and 28 cents. Duell Corporation in the amount of 329,383 dollars and 90 cents. Interior Environment in the amount of 179,853 dollars and 25 cents. And Lake Shore Learning Store in the amount of 44,963 dollars and 31 cents.
Thank you. Is there support?
I don't know, not though. Wait, there's more. And also procure additional furnishings through existing cooperative contract pricing from the following vendors. Custer Incorporated not to exceed 61,686 dollars. Interior Environment not to exceed 40,500 dollars. Facilitex Solutions not to exceed 37,408 dollars and 20 cents. And Area Incorporated not to exceed 102,400 dollars for a project total of 1,982,586 dollars and 44 cents as presented.
Thank you. That's a mouthful. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The resolution, or the authorization for Furniture Bid Award is approved. We have a motion to adopt the resolution for School Loan Revolving Fund Debt Refunding.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing 2021 refunding bond, Series B, not to exceed 15,250,000 dollars as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This has to be a roll call.
Okay, it's a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Brissette?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. Clarity?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Resolution for School Loan Revolving Fund Debt Refunding is approved. So we'll move on to recap the next steps.
I do not have any, any next steps from tonight's meeting. From my perspective.
The usual.
Right, right.
So we'll move on to closing comments, and Rick?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
Nothing further.
Thanks, Jeff. Nothing further, thank you, thank you.
I guess I just mentioned, you know, Burgett, you have many talents, but I think we just saw another one with, wait, there's more. I think we could do an internal march or something. You know, it was, it was really nice to see the learning highlights that, you know, Mark and Heidi presented here tonight. It's, it's nice to focus on what education is this year, and we spend so much time focusing on what education is not. And so I really appreciate that that is part of what we're doing. Also, just wanted to thank you for having the trust in us to, you know, make these really difficult decisions. You know, each, each meeting, I will, you know, thank our staff, thank you, it's really important. You know, our cabinet has just been, you know, amazing, the work that we're having to do to manage through this as well as lead. You know, we talked about all of the purchases that we made, that's leading the district forward. Julie and Mark have been amazing. We continue to, you know, work through, you know, balancing the needs of our students, of our staff, our community, NU is the board, and we appreciate the, you know, the respect that people have given us through this work. So thank you to the cabinet and Mark and Julie. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll start that with Steve.
No comments tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jake.
Yeah, I just wanted to address, you know, there's someone who passed away who, who really helped our Board of Education. Have you heard us talk about Neola is a third-party service company that helps us out with our policies, and Neola signs a representative to every district. So for the past several years, our representative was Dr. Wayne Peters. He was a longtime superintendent in Holly School, and what an interesting guy. That whole time, he was also a lieutenant colonel in the military reserve. So he was super patient with me my first couple of years on the board, asking him questions. He taught me a ton, and our district is a better district for the work that he did and helped us establish our policies, and just wanted to pass on my condolences to everyone who knew him.
Thanks, Jake.
Thanks for that, Jake, and that's exactly what my closing comments are addressing. The board does a lot of work that's unseen by the general public, and indeed by most of the school district. The policy committee is one such area of extensive work, and the work is primarily done with the guidance of our representative from Neola. Last week, we were notified of the passing of our Neola representative, Dr. Wayne Peters. His passing was unexpected and a bit shocking. Tonight, I want to share with you just a little bit about Wayne, as he had a huge impact on our Board of Education, our school district, and this impact is replicated throughout the region that he represented with his work in Neola. Wayne was officially Dr. Wayne Peters as he earned his doctorate from Michigan State University in 1996. After his successful career as a history teacher, high school principal, assistant superintendent, and superintendent in districts around Michigan and Ohio, Wayne retired as superintendent of Holly Area Schools in 1999. He was also in the military reserves and finished his military career as a lieutenant colonel in 2000. That's when he began his second career as a consultant with Neola, working with school districts around southeast Michigan. I would classify Wayne as a policy geek because he knew his educational laws and policies, and he absolutely loved helping districts work through the establishment of sound policy. He enjoyed this work, and we enjoyed working with him. Most of you listening or watching didn't know Wayne or what he did, but his work impacted you. Tonight, as we pay a small tribute to a remarkable man with an incredible legacy, I hope you'll take a moment to reflect on Wayne and the amazing impact he had on education. His work ethic kept him going until the end. Wayne passed away peacefully, though unexpectedly, at the age of 80. Oh, that we could all be like Wayne, loving what we do and contributing until the end. Rest in peace, Dr. Wayne Peters. Thanks to you, we have a great policy management, and we'll take it from here.
Thank you, Bernie. Susan?
Nothing further.
Thank you, Danielle.
I just want to say thank you to the leadership class, and congratulations to all the newly elected officers. Can't wait to get to meet you at some point. And a huge congratulations to Mrs. Zach, who's someone who's spent a significant amount of time volunteering in life, and she doesn't always, it's not always easy to see how much she does, but she, she has a work course to share, and I'm glad she can be acknowledged for that. So thank you.
Thank you. And finally, I'd just like to close by extending my gratitude to everybody who makes this work. The people who are in this room, the people who are in every classroom, and the parents who continually adjust to the shifting sands of education as we've had this year. And all of those factors have to be in place and working well to have success, and I believe that those things are happening here in Lake Orion, and, and I'm very grateful for all of those people who make it happen. On that note, we're adjourned. Thank you.